All order. The Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. We all rise and pay respects to the flag.
My flag is just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll.
Ferrari?
President.
Noel?
Yes.
Payne?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Dunn?
Charles?
Curtis?
Here.
Okay, I look for an approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the agenda as presented.
I'll second. Okay, a motion made by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Roll call, please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item number six. Public comment on items not on the agenda. If there's any members of the public that want to comment, come up to the mic, speak your name, address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak if there are any items not on the agenda the public wants to speak about. Seeing none, move on to item number seven. First reading of zoning ordinance 67A dot zero twenty-six. Schedule of uses, associated definitions, specific standards, and temporary storage. Who wants to take this one? Is that what's... Any... John?
I'd like to make a motion to sort of... to sort of second reading and possible adoption of the amendment to Article Two, Section two point two definitions. Article Three, Section three point five, A through R, sections of use regulations. Article Five, Section five point seven, caretakers' quarters. Article Five, Section five point eight, cement and asphalt mixing plants. Article Five, Section five point one three, community building or lodge, house, and table of contents. And the addition of Article Five, Section five point three six, biofuel production facility. Article Five, Section five point three seven, farm, market, roadside stand. Article Five, Section five point three eight, temporary concrete batch plant. And Article Six, Section six point two seven, temporary storage to the Charter Township of Oxford. Zoning ordinance 67A to be considered at the top. Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, December 8th, 2020, regular meeting.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, thank you, regular meeting. I would also...
I'm sorry.
I would also like to note that on the handout that you board members have, it needs to be corrected to sixty-seven A point zero two six, not seven six A point zero point zero two six.
Okay. I will second that without any change.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Noel. We have a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Does anybody want that repeated? Are there any questions?
Just a comment, Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
The attorney has reviewed and said additional comments, so you'll see a different revision in your packet for next month. Just to let you know that.
A few changes?
Yes. Yes.
A few as in like...
No. Two or four? Three or four pages.
Okay.
So you're welcome.
Okay, well, before the second reading?
Correct.
You have any other questions?
Yes, if that's that many changes, is that something appropriate for us to go down now or not?
Yes. Okay, roll call. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Okay, item eight, second readings. Number eight... A letter A, junk vehicle ordinance, number one thirty-six.
I move to adopt ordinance one thirty-six, remember to chapter twenty-two, Article Two, Section twenty-two to thirty-four, Section twenty-two dash thirty-five, Oxford Charter Township Code of Ordinances as presented.
I'll second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, Trustee Charles?
There is mentions of a fine for a second violation. What's that dollar amount fine?
We are going to have the dollar amount fine set at the December 8th meeting after review with attorneys in other like townships. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Payne, Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, item B, littering ordinance, number one thirty-seven.
I move to adopt ordinance one thirty-seven, remember to chapter thirty, Article One, Section thirty-four, to the Oxford Charter Township Code of Ordinances as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Oh, I saw the end go up. Nope. Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, fire department. Assistant Chief Matt, do we have anything from the fire department tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Item ten, Sharp Engineering Report.
Good evening, board members. Just a couple of quick updates. The safety path that was removed on North Oxford Road by the high school as part of the school project over there that has been reinstalled over there, so that path is back in functional again. And then the North Oxford... or sorry, the Dunlap Road safety path up here, which CJ secured some grant funds for. The remaining handicap ramps and so forth were installed just yesterday, so there's some barricades around it right now, but those could probably come down, and so that pathway is open, going to be open to the public, creating a very nice loop around the entire community all the way through Waterstone, Dunlap, into the village. But again, thanks to CJ for the grant money that he got for that. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, Trustee Charles?
That safety path, is it limited to pedestrian traffic or what?
Put a bike on it.
Well, bike or what else?
Yeah, you're not... I don't believe that.
Bikining, walk, no motorized.
No motorized. No motorized.
Guys, according to the ordinance, there's no motorized vehicles allowed on our safety path.
So electric...
Electric bikes up to class B, I think it is. But there is a speed limit on the safety path and on the land trail.
No cars, no motorcycles.
I'll watch my walking speed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any questions for Engineer Sharp?
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven, unfinished business. Item A, wage and salary recommendations. I'm going to take this one. Over the past few weeks, some mistakes were made, some people spoke out of turn, some terms were taken out of turn with impact to many of our employees in our township. Secondly, I will not have a member of our committees that are appointed by this board be pointed out or singled out as people making decisions. They're a recommending board, they're not a decision committee. They recommend to this township board what will happen or what is recommended to happen. So with those mistakes being made, I make a motion that Curtis Wright, Jack Curtis, and Margie Payne review all wages for per diem, salaries of all, permanent, contract, and appointed employees, and have a recommendation for our December 8th, 2021 Township Board meeting. I'll second. I have a motion by Supervisor Curtis and a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to mention that the six percent has already been approved by this board, and also the elected officials, the committee, it was a separate committee for the elected officials, and that has been completed and submitted.
Okay, we'll be addressing any unaddressed issues in the wage and salary in our committee. Okay? Thank you. Item eleven B, cemetery tree cutting proposals. Curtis, you want to take this one?
I'll take it. Back on our last meeting last month, Supervisor Curtis, myself, as part of the cemetery committee, was directed to analyze trees that needed to be cut. Identified twenty-eight trees on the research that we felt was critical, and we sent the proposals out to sixteen group back in the... We contacted sixteen companies, ten people pulled proposals, we received three proposals back. The proposed low bidder pulled out because they could not get the equipment or the manpower, so the second low bidder is being presented to you tonight to be considered for approval to move this project forward. Just to give you an idea, this is the... It's hard to move my cursor here, but here's a map of some of the close areas of the trees we're proposing to cut down, and considering that this proposal is approved, we're also looking to see if the board is interested in grinding the stones and removing the debris from there, and so there's an extra $5,000 in the motion presented to you also. What we're also planning to do is we're also looking to get approval from the board, maybe not tonight, but to get some restoration for additional tree plantings for some of the trees that will be removed, especially in the southeast corner. You can see that there's ten trees that are going to be removed by about two to three hundred square foot area there. But our proposal was to have Terrence Tree and Landscape perform the work on your packet. We provided a lot of information for the proposed consultants to return and have it for your review and consideration. But the proposal was, what was it, seventy-four thousand? I don't want to pull that out, get the exact numbers here.
The one that's recommended is Terrence, correct?
Terrence is recommended, who's going to cut and remove for sixty-six thousand five hundred, then he'll grind the stones for seventy-six thousand five hundred.
Remove all the debris and fill in with Tepso.
With an... For an additional five thousand, if the board wants to move forward with the actual removal.
Let's entertain some questions. What do you have, Joe?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, let's answer some questions. First off, the board, we were challenged with going out and surveying all the trees in the four cemeteries. These twenty-eight trees are identified and marked as clearly dangerous. They're rotten, they're falling down. We spent a lot of money this summer cleaning up some of their branches. This is not... This is in one cemetery. We're not going anywhere else, and we're not touching all the trees that were recommended to be removed. These are deemed the most dangerous. And what Curtis talked about was, we have to get them out of there, and how they are to be gotten out is they have to use plywood. They have to build boxes and protective devices around mausoleums and headstones. So in the spring, we're working with Parks and Rec, they're purchasing trees out of snowber at a real good price. We can put these two-inch caliber trees in the cemetery to replace the trees. I know they're not sixty, eighty, a hundred feet tall like we're cutting out, but we will have a plan to put them back in, some back in for the future. Any other questions?
I move to approve the proposal from Terrence Tree and Landscape, the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars for the cutting, removal, and stump grinding of twenty-eight trees in the Oxford Township Cemetery north side, and approve an amount of five thousand dollars for the removal of the stump grinding debris and replacement with topsoil, grass seating, and hay. The seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars amount and five thousand dollar amount to be expensed to cemetery fund one oh one, five six seven, nine three two point zero zero zero, general maintenance.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Let's go through any questions. Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item twelve A, resolution in honor of Mike Young. Mike Young was a member of the Planning Commission since 2012. He decided to move to somewhere real nice and warm, to be close to his daughter in college. We... Oxford Township is losing one heck of a planning commissioner that's done a wonderful job for Oxford Township. Curtis, would you read the resolution for me, please?
I will. If I can use that one.
You can use this one.
Yeah, I'll use that one.
Thank you.
Whereas Michael Young was appointed to the Oxford Township Planning Commission...
Mike, come on up here, stand up here so everybody knows who you are. You won't be seeing much from your Oxford. Okay. This guy's done a hell of a job for Oxford in the planning commission. Come on up. Thank you. Good.
Okay. Whereas Michael Young was appointed to the Oxford Township Planning Commission in April 2012, and whereas Mr. Young was elected chairperson of the Planning Commission in 2017, and whereas Mr. Young continued to hold the position of chairperson until his resignation on November 1, 2021, and whereas Mr. Young served on the Economic Development Committee, Ordinance Review Committee, Gravel and Spashy Committee, Lot Split Committee, and the Planning and Development Committee, and whereas Mr. Young led the planning commission with quiet dignity, and whereas Mr. Young was always respectful of others, whether they were fellow commissioners, applicants, developers, consultants, or residents, and whereas Mr. Young's style of leadership was characterized by civility, integrity, professionalism, mindfulness, patience, openness, common sense, sincerity, supportiveness, and a genuine willingness to consider all perspectives, and whereas Mr. Young routinely created a meeting environment where everyone felt welcome, heard, accepted, and valued, and whereas Mr. Young exerted calming influence on meetings whenever emotions ran high, and whereas Mr. Young's ability to listen with an open mind and express his thoughts in an honest, direct, and courteous manner earned him the respect and admiration of his peers and the public. Now for there be it resolved that the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees wishes to thank Michael Young for his tireless commitment to public service. Oxford Township is a wonderful place to live, work, play, shop, and visit because of Mr. Young's leadership, attention to detail, smart decisions, and dedication to bettering the community. Oxford Township wishes Mr. Young and his family with best of luck as they begin a new chapter in South Carolina.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Roll call, please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Reluctantly, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I got to find somebody to have soup with. There'll be more soup available in Oxford now, for sure.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, item twelve B, funding for zoning map revisions.
I move to authorize the Oxford Township Planner, Ordinance Review Committee, and Plan Commission to proceed with the recommended amendments and revisions to the Oxford Township zoning map to be presented for consideration of approval at a future Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting.
I'll second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Uh... Roll call. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Okay, item twelve C, Road Commission of Oakland County gravel road paving plan, Dunlap Road. Board members, a few years back, Dunlap Road was submitted to be paved. When the funds from the federal government were allocated, matching funds from Oakland County and a part funded by Oxford Township, we would end up paying approximately ten percent. The list in front of you that was considered, we are fourth bound from the top. So the chances of this being done anytime before 2026 are almost impossible, not inconceivable, but this board has to have a commitment to move forward with that proposal to pave Dunlap Road from the end of the pavement at the Township Hall out to M24. This commitment is to let the county know that we are still wanting that done, and we will consider the ten percent payment when the time comes.
Jack, we could always back out if it's too high, correct?
Yes, we can. Clerk Wright, you talked to Alex Gomez from the Road Commission today, and you want to give us a brief update what he told you?
What Mr. Gomez indicated is that we are just applying for our support that we would like to have this project completed, but once the project is on their drawings for completion and our response, we will have an opportunity to withdraw if the price is too high. He did indicate that potentially because we're number four on this list that we will not potentially be looking at this project until probably 2026, so it's a ways out, so there's still time to get more information on it. But it allows us to get in the stacks.
I move that the Charter of Township of Oxford fully supports the paving of Dunlap Road from the end of the existing pavement, M24 Highway. The Charter of Township of Oxford commits the ten percent local community funding for the paving of Dunlap Road for the Federal Surface Transportation Program.
I'll second. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, item D, twelve D, parcel zero four dash three six dash one zero zero dash zero zero two, inclusion in sewer district and water district. Board members, remembering back, Clearview Homes purchased the land from... or is purchasing the land from the crossroads from youth on the south side of Drainer Road. The land was changed to R2 zoning, and we have asked Engineer Sharp to look and see what the pump station on Drainer Road, what sewage it would take, and it was deemed that we would need to rebuild it. This board authorized $100,000 for Jim Sharp to come up with the design and engineering to accommodate putting Clearview Homes in the sewer and water district. Clearview Homes has since committed to helping fund this proposal to the tone of $360,000. We would be taking $140,000 of monies that were going towards the maintenance of that pump, and we were allocated $100,000 from this board for the engineering, and at which time the ARPA monies came in from the state, and it's pretty good news today that this check, Joe Ferrari, came into my office this afternoon and said, "I think we got our money." So we got $1,011,621, so that $100,000 we can use out of this for the engineering of that sewage upgrade system to that pump. So with that, we are considering Clearview Homes to be added to the sewer and water district in prevention of the wetlands to the south by adding septics and allowing more open space for the land. To that, I know John is our representative from the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission and Vice Chair here. I know this was discussed in the Planning Commission a bit, not a lot, but we'd like to move forward with this. So if there's any questions, I'll take questions from the audience or the board. First, the audience. Seeing none, the board, Trustee Charles?
So the ARPA money, are we potentially creating a precedent for using this ARPA money for this project when other projects might come up?
No.
No problem if other developers are saying we want some of that money to this.
No. Nope, it's not a precedence. It's one of the four categories that the money could be spent on, and the committee, which we have to do some realignment on, has offered up some of these funds. I believe this is number three on the four available avenues you can spend the money on. No one else has come forward with it yet.
Another question, then?
Yes, sir, Trustee Charles?
So the committee that dealt with the ARPA money, I don't recall them having this on there, so you redo the ARPA committee is what you're saying?
No, this was not on there, but the motion made at the last meeting was the engineering funds to upgrade this would be taken out of the ARPA monies once they were gotten or taken out of the sewer fund. Now that we have the money, we're coming out of the ARPA money. Any other questions?
I move to approve the expansion of the Oxford Township Sanitary Sewer District, including a portion of parcel oh four thirty-six one hundred zero zero one, south of East Drainer Road, and parcel zero four thirty-six one hundred oh two, the sanitary sewer district and the water district. Further, Sharp Engineering is authorized to update the sanitary sewer district map, the water district map, adding a portion of parcel oh four thirty-six one hundred zero zero one, south of East Drainer Road, adding parcel number zero four thirty-six one hundred oh two, the sanitary sewer district and water district.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, and I have a second by Clerk Wright. Any more questions?
Mr. Chair, a question.
Yes, sir, Trustee Noel.
Since this came, it was right before the meeting, I couldn't ask this question, so please bear with me. What's the portion mean of the parcel?
I can answer that. Curtis will bring the map on. As you can see right now, the portion that we're entering into the water and the sewer district is south of Drainer Road. Drainer Road cuts that parcel off. The intent of the developer is to give that or sell that or get that parcel back to the Camp Oakland. They're just going to entertain development on the southern portion of Drainer Road properties. So that's where we're talking about. Thank you. Any other questions? I look for roll call, please. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. Item number twelve E, purchase of verity scan election ballot... Item number 12E, purchase of Verity Scan Election Ballot Tabulator. Who would like? I take that one.
I'll take that one. I move to approve the purchase of a Verity Scan Voting Tabulator. The cost of a Verity Scan Voting Tabulator to be extended to the elections account 101-262-977.000 equipment accusation.
We have a motion by Trustee Noel. We have a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Yes, sir, Trustee Charles.
What does this do? I mean, voting tabulator, kind of, I assume, but maybe it's more specific.
Yeah, what happened was, and I had a video of what happened
at one of the precincts that was being loaded up for the election. What happened was, when it was loaded up and the machine was turned on, the screen started flickering on the voters to see that. It did not affect the count of the ballots going in there, but it would flicker then and it would be all right. So, what we're looking at is getting this approval to have a backup unit just in case something goes wrong in future elections. Right now, we have no spare equipment because with the increase in the ACT voting, we've used the spare that we had to tabulate ballots in the actual voting board. So, with this, it just guarantees us the insurance that we won't have a glitch in the August or November midterm elections and any elections going forward. Because if we don't approve this, then we potentially have a one and a half or two hour wait to get a repair person out from heart to go ahead and fix the machine because sort of that, we're putting ballots into an auxiliary down there to catch up to the tabulator then once it's actually fixed or repaired. So, this gives us more insurance to actually be able to run a smooth election the way we have been doing it for several years.
So, it's a spare tire?
It is. It's an insurance for peace of mind and also the satisfaction of the voters and for us as a township to be able to run a solid election.
May I ask your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? A roll call, please. Clerk Wright? Yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Well, this is a tough one. In your packet is a signed email from Trustee William Dunn informing the Township Board he tendered his resignation effective November 2nd, 2021 as a trustee for the Charter Township of Oxford. He cited some health issues and he wants to start vacationing and he is taking Izzy and is he taking Betty? He's going to start doing some vacationing. I looked around, it's the first time that he hasn't been in a meeting in a while. I don't know what to do. I'd like for somebody to say something and he's not there. But the resignation shall be affected when this Township Board accepts it and that would be November 10th. And based on the timing of the acceptance of this resignation, the resident appointed to fill the vacancy will serve until November 8th, 2020 midterm general election, at which time the trustee position will be determined by a vote of the registered voters of Oxford Township and the Village of Oxford. Did I say 20?
You said 2020.
2022, I'm still choked up. Attached is supporting information in your packet, including the MCL defining the process to fill the vacancy and to serve the remainder of the elected Oxford Township trustee position. Before we go any further, this is a discussion time before motions made. So, we're going to capture some of these. Reading the red book like the Bible the last two days and talking with Curtis Wright, there's several ways of doing it. Other communities have elected to just throw a name out, get a nomination and vote. Other communities broadcast to the community through social network, through local newspapers, through word of mouth and have a deadline to have nominees come back for a trustee. This trustee sat on several committees, the Wage and Salary Evaluation, NODA, OCTV and the Gravel Inspection Committee. So, as these, as we move forward to select a candidate, we have to all vote and be in favor of the way we're going to do this. Once we do this, we'd like to have all of our nominations made at our December 8th meeting. Otherwise, we will have to have a special meeting to nominate a new trustee for the, until the 2022 November 8th date. So, are there anybody that'd like to comment on how we should fill this position? Let's take them all and listen to what we had. We'll start with Trustee Charles.
Off the cuff, I'd like to see expressions of interest from potential candidates in the form of a letter.
Okay. Any others?
I move to accept the resignation.
Well, let's go through everybody in case we've got to add them to the note. Any others? Letter of expression meaning?
An expression of interest in the resignation. Yes, accompanied by a resume.
Okay. Clerk Wright?
Well, I put the motion together with what the process the Township did when Mr. Nichols resigned and Mr. Noel's appointed. So, that's exactly what the Township did there. But I would also like to see, because social media is a popular means of communication, if we could put something potentially on our website and/or the Facebook communication. And if there's a blank that I'm not thinking of, I think the more we communicate out to the general public of the vacancy, I think it's better that we'll get interested candidates and we'll know that on December 8th.
Okay.
The people that are interested will come forward.
Okay. Trustee Payne, you have any input?
Well, I know that one of the things that we can do is take the next most popular from the last election. Have you spoken to that person?
No, I have not. I wanted the board to let me know what they wanted to do.
Well, I think that's an avenue we should explore.
So, reach out to the previous candidate that didn't get elected, that belonged to second?
Correct.
Amount of votes, okay? Any other suggestions? Trustee Payne?
No.
Okay. Trustee Noel?
I participated the last go around in this effort and I thought that was well managed, well run. I'm interested in seeing interest from the community. So, you folks in the audience have a fair shot at putting a resume together and submitting it to the Township Office. We're interested in the trustee board for that one-year term.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari?
I agree with as already consented.
Okay. And myself, I don't want to even attempt to make it look like I'm stacking the board. I don't want, I want it to be a clear and concise democracy on how we get elected officials to trust your money. And I agree with all of that, especially reaching out and asking for letters of interest. And with that letter of interest, I'd like to see a resume. It just is good to know the business background, educational background of these candidates. And I would also like to use the social media page that we have run by CJ for the Charter Township of Oxford and advertise these things. It's got to be a due date so that we can get it in the packet. And once it was in the packet, we all had a chance to review it. We would hold live interviews with each candidate at the Township Board on December 8th. That is December 8th. Yes, it is. So, they would have to have their resumes in by Wednesday, December 1st at 4:00. So, Thursday, they could be put in all the board packets and be known. And then at the December 8th Charter Township of Oxford meeting, we would hold interviews and the first candidate that would receive or be nominated and receive four votes would be the next trustee, correct?
If you have a full six-person board, yes. You have five, three votes.
Everybody's going to be here on December 8th? Got Willie?
I move to accept the resignation of Oxford Township trustee William Dunn with regret to be effective November 10th, 2021. Further, a legal notice will be published in the Oxford Leader November 17th, 2021 and November 24th, 2021. Inform interested residents of resume and letter of interest due to the clerk's office by 4:00 PM on the December 1st, 2021. Interviews and possible appointment will be scheduled for the December 8th, 2021 on Charter Township of Oxford regular meeting to fill the vacancy.
Second. Okay. Motion was by Treasurer Ferrari. Second was by Clerk Wright. Now, I want included in there, in the motion itself, the social media adage because we did the Oxford Leader. I do want this board to approve or disapprove, putting it on social media.
CJ, would you even strike him to do that?
I, you know, and I pay the Oxford Leader to do things that we're told to do, so.
So, CJ, you want it done? It's done.
Does this need to be included in the motion? Clerk Wright?
If you want to amend the motion to include that, Treasurer Ferrari will have to amend his motion.
If there's a person works underneath Supervisor Curtis.
Treasurer Ferrari will have to amend his motion. I'll have to second the amendment. We vote on the amendment and we vote on the original motion.
I'd like to stay with the motion. I think Supervisor Curtis just has to make that direction and stop.
Please. Okay, wait. Hands are up. Clerk Wright?
Okay, the other alternative is that we vote on this motion and we have a secondary motion that includes the social media.
Yes, sir, Trustee Charles. Yes.
It's still late in the night, I do realize. I would agree with what Mr. Ferrari said. I think it's your prerogative to direct your employee or your person in your department to put on social media.
Okay, Madam Recording Secretary, can I just direct my employee to put this on social media? Okay, I'll call the vote then. Clerk Wright? Yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yep.
So, what we voted on was, we are going to advertise for two weeks for candidates to fill the trustee's position. After two weeks, they'll be turned in with a letter of interest to the clerk's office by 4:00 PM Wednesday, December 1st. I hope you're out here on December 8th after reading the candidate's qualifications and come forward with the nomination and we can all agree to vote one new member into our board. Yes, sir.
You mentioned you had some people that were interested. You may want to reach out to them to tell them to please follow that process?
I have. Yes. As soon as word got out that Bill was retiring or resigning, I received two resumes right off the bat and several phone calls. So, there are a lot of interest in the community. I wish I would have gotten 100.
Were you not going?
I know. I'm going to get 100 now. Watch what I ask for.
By the time one, Mr. Jackie, we checked and tell them, please send the clerk Wright that that's the process.
Yes, sir. Okay, item 12G, appointment of a gravel inspection committee member from this board. Members, annually, a gravel inspection is performed at all mines still in the gravel overlay in the Charter Township of Oxford. A gravel inspection includes getting up and driving to each gravel pit, sitting down with the manager, the owner or the operator, going over reclamation plans, going over mining plans, going over any items of violation we might hear of, have recorded or visually see. We talk to them about the future of their mining. We ensure that their bonds are in and up to date. Then we come back, we fill out a report and we respond to any deficiencies noted. If not, we file it away until the following year. I need one member from this board of six who wants to go on a gravel inspection.
Who's on the committee now?
Myself and the chairman of the Planning Commission, who right now is being done by the Vice Chair, Tom Berger. Do I have any volunteers? I'd be interested in volunteering for that.
I move to appoint Trustee John Noel to serve as a member for the Oxford Township Gravel Inspection Committee effective immediately.
Okay. I wanted to give Margie a chance to be in a gravel pit.
I'm sure you're alive when you're there.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. I have a second by Trustee Payne. A roll call, please. Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright? Yes. And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Could I just, at the last Planning Commission meeting, Tom Berger was voted as the chair. So, he is no longer the vice chair, he is the chair.
Okay.
Mr. Spitz is the vice chair.
Okay, so the chair will be going on our meeting as well. And he's already good with that. We've got it in his calendar. Thank you, Tom. Let's move on. Items removed from the consent agenda, seeing none. Another opportunity, item number 14. Public comment from the members in the audience. Anybody want to come up and make a comment? State your name, address, what your comment is. You have three minutes. Seeing none. Board of trustees comments. Trustee Payne? Trustee Noel?
I am excited about the possibilities of Dunlap Road to be paved.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, they're thinking.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I'm glad we're revisiting the wage issue. I'm hoping that the three people who'll be appointed can look at the dilations, discuss with the supervisors and come back with a fair and just recommendation.
Okay, Trustee Charles?
From my usual report on the Gypsy Moth endeavors from the Township here, we've got a training session scheduled on November 17th here in this building and Mr. Curtis set up the building for the day. Thank you very much. We have a training session that starts at 9:00 in the morning and then went at 1:00. I talked to a participant this morning, did it over at Van Boozen in Rochester. He told me that they had about an hour classroom training in the morning and then they went out and did a field study. He said they start around 12:30 and it was done by 3:30. As far as the potential spraying, they do 10 acre minimums, which I would think we would more than satisfy that since last year we identified 942 acres that were invested. Of course, the big issue would be cost. We'll get set and done. Just in case, to remind them too, we are doing this with Macomb and Michigan State University, they're leading a parade on this. Oakland Township is, or Oakland County is participating and give some credit to Commissioner Mike Spitz. The county is kicking in 250,000 bucks. Some of that is allocated toward administration. The rest of it will be divided among communities that are interested in the Gypsy Moth suppression program. I would expect a lot of money, but it's better to poke in the eye.
As we do continue to work on getting that, it was brought up at the last meeting in Fairlawn Farm.
Okay. The other thing I'll say too, I'm also part of the DDA, you know. Just a quick thing on the DDA, we've been pretty, I think it's been a successful year for the DDA as we come to a close. Our next big event is going to be the Supan Sweet Scroll. We're working on that. We've also got some things going on for the Chamber of Commerce Christmas parade coming up. And she might have noticed that the Village of Oxford, the DDA area, service area is looking probably as good as I've ever seen in the years I've lived in Oxford. So, that's it, my two whole points.
Thank you, Trustee Charles. Clerk Wright?
Yes, sir, several items here. Just to piggyback on the Gypsy Moth, was training Just to piggyback on the Gypsy Moth, those training sessions are a week from tomorrow. There's one at nine o'clock and then there's another one at, what, one-thirty?
And that's one o'clock.
One o'clock. So there's two, you can sign up online if anybody's interested. There is a website. If you need information, you can contact myself or Trustee Charles on that. There's thirty seats available.
Thirty seats available, I think.
I think, I think there's only like fifteen left. So that's good for us because it's in our home community. So hopefully we'll get some preferential treatment because we do have some pretty heavy infestation. On to our election, we are well aware of the results of the election. The bond proposal was voted down. But for me, as a clerk, I'm just impressed with my staff and the workers I step up to really assist in making the election go well. There's only one ballot issue on this election, but we still have to go through the process, no matter how big it is or how big the ballot is. So we continue to really do a great job, in my opinion. So I definitely appreciate it for Susan Kelly and Noel and others that set up the elections and make it look good for me. I'm honored to, I just want to comment, just to thank Bill again for his service to the Township as a trustee, as a supervisor. You know, there's a generation of experience, knowledge, commitment to this community. And I'm sure I'll see Bill passing somewhere, but I just want to reiterate the appreciation of serving with him and his dedication to Oxford Township. Also, what I'd like to do, in the bill run, we just had our department manager go to a MERS conference. I think we need to be looking at that tighter to see what our obligations are and maybe get a matrix together going forward, what our obligations are to potentially decrease that percentage that we owe and maybe get this thing under control maybe better than what it is. So just a brainstorm thought to actually conquer the MERS issue, so to speak. And if that's something that you want me to be part of, I'm happy to do so. Also, on the twenty-third of November, I think it's the chamber's going to do the lighting on the Larry Obrak Bridge for the holiday season. It's from four-thirty to six o'clock. Also, tomorrow, the Township Hall is closed for Veterans Day. And last is a happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Wright. First off, I attended the CTE Advisory Board today. That's Career Technical Education at the High School, where we bring advisors in from different businesses, work with the committees, and try to formulate ventures with young students and businesses. Some people in the room are familiar with it, some aren't. It's a great opportunity. We've done the FIRE EMT through the Career Technical Education with Oxford Township and Addison Township. We've started one where we're going after the grant funding for the Oakland County Sheriff and law enforcement. And I'm taking many advisors to some of the businesses around town and they're amazed at what goes on in Oxford. Anything from the building of military jet engine precision parts to ring gear and pinions for cars. And some of this stuff just isn't known. I want to reiterate one thing. When these board members are assigned to a committee, the committee makes recommendations. It's the committee, it's not the person. The person should never be attacked on the committee. If there is a problem with the committee, it comes to the board. Any member that speaks poorly of a committee member in front of anybody will be definitely chastised because working on these committees is sometimes thankless and we do not need somebody speaking out of turn or until this board votes on what should be done based on the recommendations from our committees. Whether it's entering into sewer districts, whether it's entering into gravel inspections, wages, I don't care what it is. This board will treat the members of those committees with respect and not say a word until this board makes it approved. Third, thanks to all of our veterans. That's it.
I'll make a note for adjournment.
I'll second that.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Charles. I remembered your name.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, meeting adjourned.